Ted Stokes, a city councilman in Smithfield, Utah, resigned on September twentieth twenty-five after body camera footage surfaced of him confronting police officers in an aggressive and threatening manner.
Uh, why are you here?
He's asking you which cars involved.
I want to know why there's two officers responding to such a simple thing.
Cause they can't be.
We pay a lot of money for you guys in this city.
Okay.
And I decide whether the budget's good or not. And so I think you should go patrol Main Street. Do your job and I'll talk to him and I'll deal with this.
Okay.
Go, go patrol.
Actually, I'll talk to him.
Look, guys, we pay so much money for this. Look, look, I just.
Why don't you just hang out for a second?
Go patrol Main Street, make yourself useful. Come on, guys. Go patrol Main Street, make yourself useful. Let's not waste taxpayer dollars.
So, tell me what's going on.
Come down here, I've got a family event going on.
Okay, that's fair. I'm willing to do that.
I want to know why you're even here.
Because there, I am obligated to investigate. There's a car that's wrecked down there.
Uh huh. Yeah.
And you have already talked to the guy and said that your son had run into his car.
Yeah, and I gave him my insurance and I gave him everything and he and I, we already called and made an insurance report. State Farm's handling everything.
Okay, and it's also over fifteen hundred dollars, so I need to investigate.
His car's totaled, yeah. So he called you. That's what you, yeah, that's all you needed to say. Hey.
Yes, he called me.
Yeah, see, see, this is the problem. And, and I'm, your guys' lack of training blows my mind. It blows my mind. Hey Ted, I'm here, there was an accident, the person whose car owned.
Will you please not step up on me?
No, I'm telling.
I'm asking you not to.
No, 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 I'm telling you how you're supposed to do your job because you obviously don't know. Look, listen. Hey Ted, the person, the person that your son, your son hit earlier has asked that I make a police report. I'm here to do that. Instead, you show up like you're an FBI agent doing some big secret thing. Like, who trained you? I want to know, who trained you?
Can I get your son's name?
How old are you?
Can I get your son's name?
How old are you?
Okay.
How long have you been?
Are you going to impede an investigation?
No, are you gonna, are you, are, do you have a warrant to be here?
I'm on public property right now.
I'll cooperate with you, but you.
I'm trying to.
You guys have got to learn how to do your job right. We are botching so many things in this city because of you guys, and you know that. You're aware of everything, and I'm aware of everything.
Can I get your son's name?
You can step onto my property and I will talk to you if you will be reasonable. Let's start the conversation over.
Let's do it.
Please.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Ted Stokes.
I am here because there was a complaint about your vehicle or your son hitting another vehicle. And the vehicle looks like it's totaled.
And the person who made the complaint was the person who owned the car?
Yes.
Okay, cool. We already talked to him, I'm happy to help you out.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we need your.
Two responding officers.
Yes.
For a non-moving vehicle incident.
What's your son's date? His driver's license?
Yeah, sure.
Do we need?
Well, you go get it court, I don't have it.
Does he need to come out here?
No, we'll see what happens.
Okay, uh, can you tell me which vehicle it was?
Yeah, it was that Honda Sonata right there.
Okay, so I do have his, uh, or I guess it's your insurance information. Does the car belong to you?
Yes.
Okay.
I stayed there for half an hour, I waited for them to get home. When they got home, I gave them their information. I don't have a problem with you being here, I have a problem with the approach to responding officers.
Yes.
To this, and, and we, we have, we, what, we probably have another accident on Main Street right now.
So it's this one right here?
I can't believe that you guys are wasting, I can't believe you have him sitting there wasting tax dollars. Give me one good reason why he's there, wasting tax dollars. I love that you want me to answer your questions, but you won't answer mine. He doesn't, he doesn't dispute, dispute fault. It's his fault.
Okay, so is your son okay?
Yeah, he brought me in and broke his knee. Hey Justin, Ted Stokes. Hey, I've got, I've got two police officers at my house. This is the most unbelievable thing I've ever seen. Tucker hit a non-moving car in the road. We gave the insurance.
Can I get a ten twenty-seven by number?
Everything was good. I think he called to make a report just to make it fine. Two officers show up at my house, walk up to my front door.
Two four seven, one one eight, four one seven.
Don't tell me anything other than we're here to do an investigation. And the other officer's still sitting here as backup. Like, this is, Justin, I'm sorry, but.
Sorry, ten nine nine.
This can't happen, Dad. Like, this other officer needs to leave and stop making.
Yes, correct.
I'm trying to give a, a report to this, but he like, he wouldn't even tell me. Like, he, it wasn't like, hey Ted, we're here. It's, it's Officer Hanson. I'm, I'm blown away by this. Justin, I promise you, I will do everything in my power as a city council member to make sure these guys are defunded. There will be five police officers in this town, because this is unbelievable, that I have a, this guy needs a backup officer to make sure I don't hurt him at my house for, for, for my son hitting a, a car non-moving. I waited a half an hour at the guy's house to give him his, his insurance policy. I'm fine with him making a police report. I'm blown away by the fact that right in the middle of my Sunday dinner, my daughter's birthday party, with five other, or five other cars here for guests, I've got forty people at my house for a birthday party. And I've got two, I've got two officers at my house, and this guy's.
Can I talk to your son?
Who's the other officer?
McComb.
McComb. Yeah, I've got Hanson and McComb. This is unbelievable. Like, get on Main Street, the other officer, and make, go, go patrol. Instead, they're making sure City Councilman Stokes doesn't do something. Like, I don't know if this is retaliatory or what, because I didn't vote. Like, it better not be, I'm telling you, Justin. Like, this is, this is over, like, this is the last straw. I, I've got two, two officers out front of my house, there's forty people in my house celebrating a birthday party. And he couldn't even tell me why he was here other than he was to investigate a car accident, that he acted like we had done a hit-and-run for. Like, that, that's how he approached me. He didn't say, hey Ted, guess what, like, some guy wants to make a report, we're here to do it. We understand you gave him your insurance information, thanks for doing that, but we're obligated to make a report. I'm fine with that. You should have seen this guy approach. I said, I'll send you the ring footage, you will be blown away by this. I, I don't know what to say, Justin, but, but that's, this is the last straw. I know I've expressed my complaints, but this is it. This is the last straw. They're both here, because he's afraid I'm gonna jump him. I, 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 I approached him to talk to him, he says, you, you need to back up off of me, back up off of me. I'm like, what are you talking, I'm standing here talking to you with a Sharpie in my hand. You think I'm gonna hurt you? Th- these guys are so untrained, Justin, it blows my mind. I am done. Like, I don't know if there's a way to amend, amend the budget now, but I want to amend it, and I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna call the other council members tonight, I'm gonna tell them exactly what happened. And we are amending it. Like, we are going to five officers, this is it. We need two officers on duty in the morning, we need two officers on duty in the afternoon, we need one officer on duty at night. This is the most unbelievable thing I have ever seen. Tell me when you can talk in the morning. I'll, go enjoy your Sabbath, I need to talk to you first thing in the morning. This is, this is unbelievable. All right, well, let's talk about it in the morning. I, I'm sorry, Justin, like, I know, like, Justin, this is culminating, like, the, I've got other stories I could tell you last week. An officer, an officer pulled someone over or in front of, just, just, just in front of the, the intersection of, of Spring Creek Fitness, or what's it called, Summer Creek Fitness. The guy pulled over, like, right past the intersection, the guy was an idiot, right? He pulled over like five feet past the intersection. So our officer parked right in the middle of the intersection, and no one could make a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn or go straight through a Main Street intersection for like thirty minutes while this guy did his stop. What would you have done, Justin, if you were the officer in that situation? Tell me what you would have done. You would have, you would have, you would have got out of the car, you would have gone up and said, hey, can you pull twenty feet forward so I can pull in behind you? But no, 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 we parked, the officer parked smack dab in the middle of the intersection and sat there and did his twenty-minute stop. And I have pictures of it, I have pictures, I have videos, like, Justin, we cannot fund this because it's not worth our money. These guys have no idea what they're doing. Oh, I'll take a picture, you see both their trucks pulled up right here to handle this issue. I am, I am done. Like, this is the last straw. It is the last straw. I am done with these guys. I, I, I'm embarrassed. I'm flat out embarrassed. I get a ticket three weeks ago for rolling through a stop sign at seven AM. And, and the officer says, sorry, I had to do it. Turns out, I find out, him and, him and, him and, him and the chief are giving each other high fives the next Monday. Like, Justin, I've got three officers in the force who tell me everything. I know everything that's going on. Like, I am done with this. Like, it's, it's done. Well, I, I want. I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you tomorrow morning. We, there, there's, changes have to happen or it's gonna be problems. Thanks, bye.
Okay, so does your son need medical attention?
No, he, he, I think he heard, he was bleeding his nose pretty bad. We handled it, but like, you know, we're competent parents, if he needed medical attention, we would take care of it.
But you think he might have broken?
I don't know. We're, we're gonna go check it out tomorrow and see. Like, we would, we would, we would handle that, right? Tell me why you think I couldn't handle my son's medical attention.
Think he can.
Don't I, isn't that my, isn't that my, it's not a right, it's my legal obligation.
But it's your right to be able to.
It's my right and my legal obligation. So, so yeah.
Okay. Uh, can I talk to him?
What, what do you need to talk to him for?
Just to find out what.
I can tell you everything that happened. He had city, he had, he had state youth council, he's on a youth council for the church.
Okay.
He pulled out of the state center, they gave them muffins, uh, chocolate muffins, you can see him on the front seat, they spilled. He set the muffin on the seat, and he was gonna eat it when he got home because he's fasting, and we were gonna eat dinner at five. And he set it down, and the muffin fell down onto the carpet. You can see where the, the frosting like got on the carpet. He bent down to pick it up, which he shouldn't have done, and he set it back up on the seat. When he looked up, he'd kind of veered off and hit this guy.
Yeah, I have a sister that years and years ago did the, almost the exact same thing. Bend over, grab the steering wheel, went across the road. Luckily, he went this way instead of end on coming in traffic.
Grateful, though no one was in the car. He's okay, he has a bloody nose, we'll look at it tomorrow and make sure it's not broken.
Do you know if he was wearing a seatbelt?
He was.
Do you know how fast he was going?
I don't think, I asked him, he said, Dad, I pulled out of the, the, the thing, and I had let off the gas because I'm going downhill anyways. He turns left at that intersection. The car got pushed about fifteen feet, ten to fifteen feet. He turns left right there, so he wouldn't be going too fast because he knows he's turning left right there. He should have turned left, but he bent over to get the muffin and.
Gotcha.
Hit it.
Okay, uh, at this point, I just need to fill out the, the witness state, or not the witness statement, but the accident exchange form. I mean, that way both of you have the exact same information.
Sure.
So that you can contact your insurance company.
I already did. We already made the report, I gave him our insurance, I hope he did too. I don't have a problem with you making a report. It's two officers and it's the approach. Blows my mind, man.
Okay, I.
Can we just?
I don't feel like I.
Yeah, no, you need to, you need to, you need to, you need to handle that better. You need to say, hey, I heard your son was in an accident, someone asked me to come make a report. And I would say, oh, was it the guy who got hit? Instead, you come up to me like you're doing an FBI investigation.
I'm not getting into that.
No, 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 Officer Hanson, you need to.
I tried to be friendly the entire time.
No, no, no.
Tried to be friendly with you the entire time. I tried to strike up a conversation.
Why are there two officers here? Justin's, Justin's, Justin's blown away.
There is a vehicle that didn't say.
And that, that's what you said too, I forgot about that.
I'm not saying.
You said, hey, there's a vehicle that's been, that's been totaled on a, on a roadside, as if we hit and run it. That's how you approached me.
I, until I get here, I don't know the full circumstance. I don't.
The person who called didn't say that we saved.
Working on paperwork so that I don't waste more time.
Let's finish this, hey, Officer Hanson, let's finish this conversation. Hey.
Okay.
Let's finish this. No, no, you said you didn't know.
I'm gonna do paperwork.
Hey, stop, 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 listen to me.
I'm gonna do the paperwork.
You're walking away from the conversation that you're up, did you know you, look, hey.
Okay.
You said, listen, you said, I didn't know the whole situation. What, what report did you receive?
What do you mean?
What were the words that the dispatch person told you?
It's all on written records.
So, no, no, you tell me.
It's all, I'm going to do my paperwork.
Why won't you just tell me? This is what I hate about you guys, the lack of transparency.
Okay.
Lack of transparency, all the bull crap, like, it's done. Like, I'm sorry, you guys dug your own grave.
Good.
It's unbelievable. Hey, Justin wants that other officer on Main Street.
Okay.
So send him.
Okay.
Zero fifty-five cash, suspicious background first.
Fifty-five.
Contact canal, but we want to choose our manager at Wendy's on Main Street thirteen hundred north. If they have a male employee, that they are worried about the other employees, thank you.
Stand for. Yeah. Yeah, I know. That's right. Okay. Okay, I'll get you on the radio. Get in here.
Yeah, sure. So, two hundred and twelve, U S D M nine four, twenty-eight, five, Papa, Echo, Echo, seven, eight. Uh, silver, seven trouble. Yeah, it's ninety-one, I have a motorcycle, one hundred and one. Pass two cars, over a double yellow, two westbound, eastbound, seventy. Seventy-two, one hundred and one, twenty percent. Ten-four, I'm just losing it now, it's a hundred or so. Lasting westbound, one hundred and one, speeds on the runway. Yeah, it's something to do, but it's a motorcycle, it's a cruiser, I cannot make out a model. Yeah, it's something to do, correction, eastbound, one hundred and one. Yeah, it's something to do, correction, eastbound, one hundred and one. Negative, he's heading in the dark. Yeah, it's something to do, uh, missing, where I see the motorcycle, he just westbound, one hundred and one. Ten-four, I'm personally, he's leaving, car, one hundred and one, ten, seventy-nine, nine four. Yeah, eighty-two, sitting in the blue cruiser. Ten-four, I can make up a model, buddy, he's westbound, one hundred and one, I lost sight of him. Drop it.
Okay, you got a second?
You're good, come on up.
I'm, I'm okay, man. Thank you, though. Uh, so this is the accident exchange form. It has your, the case number. It also has both of your insurance information that's on there. Some of it looks like I haven't put it in, but it's redacted.
I understand.
So that.
I don't need his, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, what you'll need to do, like, you've, it sounds like you've already done it, contact your insurance company, that's what they'd be looking for.
Cool.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Uh, do you want to fill out a witness statement or anything, or does your son?
No, we're good. It's his fault. We didn't, that's why we waited for thirty minutes for them to get home. That's why we gave it to him, that's why we took care of it. I, I expected someone might show up to just make a police report because sometimes the insurances want that. I just expected it. I didn't expect two officers, I didn't expect that approach.
I, yeah, I had a second officer following me out there.
It's unfortunate.
So, anyway, have a better day. See ya. And so, anyway, have a better day. See ya.
US ninety-nine, ninety-four, local, Dulo, seven, Charlie, David.
Confirming twenty-six hundred north, US ninety-one.
Yes, yes.
Delta one one, catch, we're on the high line, number of that, potential motorcycle.
Yeah, we're gonna have a, for sure direction to travel from there, let's do that just the way.
Please leave your thoughts and comments below. Also, please like, subscribe, and check out these other videos.